I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
All right, here's the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Aaron Diggs. Second by Stephanie, all in favor. Motion carries, moving on to our consent agenda. Remember, if you need to abstain from anything or have a conflict of interest, please pull those items out. And the motion to move forward with our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Craig, second by Patsy. I'm gonna abstain from four, five, seven, five, three in voice. And all in favor? Motion carries, six, oh, note that Ashley's out. She's judging an ag contest. She'll be here probably shortly. And we are moving on to presentations. Hey, Lamanda, thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Perfect, alright. So, PTO, we have been working for the last couple of years to be adding something to the playground. This year, we had our fundraising. Last year, we weren't able to fundraise. And the year before, we just didn't have quite enough money to purchase both the structure that we're looking at that I'll show you today, and then the safety tiles that go along with that. But cookie dough sales were great this year. I think our total sales were about $22,000, so that brought about $11,000 back to us. Those are just rough numbers, I don't remember the exact numbers. And then this year, we did add the option for the kids to just collect money, just to go straight to the PTO. Like, for my kids, for instance, they did that. I'm gluten-free, so we don't usually buy very much cookie dough since, you know, if I make cookies, I want to be able to enjoy them too. So, like, instead of me spending $44 on cookie dough and PTO getting about $22 of that, I just donated $30. PTO got more money and I spent actually less money because I didn't get the cookie dough. But we did add that option. We brought in about $1,000 with that. Bake sales, we had that at the little cheer camp night. We sold shirts, hats, beanies. We're gonna have the hats and beanies out for the donuts for dads on Tuesday morning, just in case any other dads or grandpas are there that want to maybe purchase those. The Brothers Market, we did the, or they offered to do the two weeks of rounding up the receipts, and that brought in about $380. Next year, we're hoping to maybe do a bike-a-thon. You know, we talked about, since cookie dough was so great this year, maybe it was because we took the year off last year, so we thought, maybe we'll try a trial of cookie dough one year, and then something else the next year, and kind of every other. See if it kind of holds to be pretty successful that way. The end goal of all of our fundraising is to be able to support the students, the teachers, and the staff at THS, or TES, sorry. This is the structure that we've been looking at and been talking to. I've been in contact with Bill Wickham from Miracle Recreation, who they're based out of Monette, Missouri. The cost of this Boulder Ridge Rock Wall, it is four panels, so it's going to look just like what you're seeing in the picture, other than the fact that we can customize the colors if we want to, to look more of Tipton colors. I know that there is a red option for the foothold. And I'm not 100% sure, but I think that there is a gray option for the, like, background, the main part of the structure. But we'll talk with him more whenever we get ready to order, if that, if we're gonna move forward. The cost of those four panels, like I said, like I said, what you're seeing there is $5,798. The recommended age range was five to 12. The capacity for those four panels was 10 students at a time, 10 children. And then the space required for the safety mats to go around, they need to be 15 feet by 27 feet. So that you're making it safe enough for the kids to climb on. Any questions so far?
I guess it's front and back.
It is, yes, yeah, they can climb on either side.
See how kids could fit on that, so that's what we're asking.
Right, yes, it is, it's front and back. Here's the safety tiles. So we need at least 405 square feet for the safety tiles to go under and around the climbing structures since that's where the kids are going to be. I contacted AAA State of Play out of Indianapolis, Indiana. For the eight-inch, or not the eight-inch, for the eight-foot max fall height, we need the three-inch thick tiles enough to cover that required space. That price quote is $7,913.66. And that does include the glue adhesive that would come with them, as well as the edge pieces, which are in the next slide. This is just a really rough diagram of what those edge pieces are gonna look like. So, where we're thinking of putting it is on the concrete, so we'll get to that in just a second. But instead of, you know, there being a pretty big lift-up from the concrete up to the three-inch tile, you know, that's just a big tripping hazard. So we do need the edge pieces to go along that, so to make it a much smoother transition. Okay, so here's our current playground, what the kids see and play on every day. And the first step would be to move the current shelter that is there. So, I kind of did some rough Photoshop and showed you a couple options of where the structure could be moved to that we kind of decided on, whenever I talked with Dr. Rob last week and Mr. Kohler as well. So option one is to put it on the kind of entrance going from the parking lot up to that basketball kind of court area. There is, Mr. Kohler thought, about 1% gray there. Probably still a viable option to put it there. That keeps it inside the playground and inside the fence and everything. And the other option that we kind of talked about when we were around was to put it just on the parking lot, just right there at the gate. A third option that I thought of kind of late in the game was to put it here in this area. We'd have to repaint the hopscotch, but this basketball goal is movable, and you'll see in the next picture that if we just slid it over, it would stay, you know, inside the fencing, still be a really good option for the kids to use whenever they're out at recess. But that's kind of the main thing to decide before we order is, where are we going to put the shelter that's there? Here is where we are wanting to place the new structure. This is the diagram that Bill had sent covering the area of 15 feet by 27 feet. And so that would set there. And like I said, the other option would be if we just moved the shelter over, it would set right here in the same orientation that it's in right now. It wouldn't have to be turned 90 degrees, but it could set and just be slid over a little bit. And still, I think, be enough out of the way of the basketball goal that it shouldn't affect anything that's already there. And the hopscotch could be painted and go in line with the four-square if we wanted to put the structure where the hopscotch is now. Installation, we're looking at fall of 2022. If we go ahead and order soon, the mats have like a five, three to five week time of whenever they would be here. I just don't want to get in the obstacle of us ordering it a little bit later and then, then come back and say, oh, well, now we're actually three to five months out. So I would probably go ahead and get those ordered. We would have to store those until we were ready to install them, but that way they were for sure here whenever the structure became available. And we're looking at a fall delivery at this point for the climbing structure. They could deliver it, since they are in Missouri, we could also drive down and pick it up and save a little bit in cost of shipping and everything. Whenever we get ready to install that, if we get to that point, we would have to drill some holes into the concrete to be able to anchor the structure down. Whenever Bill and I have talked, you know, he went and asked all the questions of, is this a new build? Is this going on fresh ground? Is this going on concrete? So he knows that it would probably be going on concrete, and it would be ordered and come with all of the correct anchors so that it would be firmly planted there where it would go. And then we'd also, or of course, have to glue down all the mats and the edge pieces. The total cost for the project would be $13,711.66 with the quotes that I have right now. And PTO's balance is, I did not get a final number, but I know that we're in about the $20,000 range. So that still leaves us with plenty of money to be able to start the next school year with enough money to order shirts and be ready for spirit wear in the fall. Any other questions?
What was the height of the structure?
It has an eight-foot fall height.
Okay.
Or possible fall height to it, so.
Lamanda, if you go back to the option one photo?
Uh-huh.
Does anybody by chance know that square footage there underneath option one?
That's, she just imposed the picture there, so that's probably how it'd be about the same size. The canopy, I think, is 18 by 21.
Yeah.
Hard work canopy.
I just picked it up from this picture and just moved it over. So, that's the, that's the, to size and to scale that it, that it is, yeah.
But that's open, yeah, so anybody can get in and out of anything.
Yeah, either one of those options. I believe if they still get the tractor on the playground, they can drive right underneath the canopy because we have a double gate.
Yeah.
And so, I think it's like a 1%, did I write for handicap, 1%?
Eighty-eight, you had 1%.
So I think it's pretty close to that when they put it in. I think when you all had that done the first time, I think they paid pretty close attention to it. So either place is great. You know, if you wanted option two, we could do it. We may have to buy a little bit of chain link and put it around the outside of it. We already have the rigging on the structure, the railing on the structure if they wanted to put chain link just to add a little more play space on the actual concrete. Either one of those options, and even like Lamanda said, if you slide it down there over the hopscotch, I think there's gonna be plenty for it. It's beneficial, the kids, some kids get shade, teachers get shade. Kids up here on the weekend, they hang out on their protected tables. So definitely, the canopy's a good thing to have.
About how long do those pads last, did they say?
They did not say how long the pads last. I assume that they will last as long as the existing ones are there as well, and they seem to, seem to be holding up really well anytime that I'm over there on the playground.
Is everything holding up on the playground?
Yep. Might want to have the turf people come in sometime and just kind of go around the edges and check the angles and just make sure things are staying in place. But yeah, I think the, the wear, I mean, it's, you go out there, look at the garden, it still looks like the day they put it down. So, it looks like it's in pretty good shape, especially along the edge of the concrete. That was our biggest concern. Water still flows off of it, it can rain and we can be on it in five minutes, so that's awesome. Yeah, it is.
We have, is it a swing set that's on the end?
So, on that picture, the north side of the picture, where the yellow is, are the swings. And then down to the far left, we have a set of two swings there by that, looks like a cooler, an outdoor freezer. So we have two, I think we have eight swings total. And this, this, this wall looks a lot longer in the, when you see it from a different view. I mean, it's probably 19, 18 feet long, so it is a pretty good sized structure.
How many students can climb on it?
Recommended 10.
Because they can climb on both sides of the.
Have you ever been down to Memorial Park, Jeff? They, they put in a new playground there, and that's kind of where we got the idea. It looks like railroad ties, but it's that real heavy-duty plastic fiberglass. It's the same thing this wall's made out of. And I'd say the height is probably six-foot.
Probably.
Probably.
And so, yeah, they, it's a good structure, I think. That park gets worked over pretty good too, so.
Yeah.
Does, do a lot of kids use that swing down there by the freezer?
Yep.
Do you think that, since teachers may use that as shade, it'd be better to keep that more central, so moving it over to the left rather than over to the right?
I don't think it makes really much difference. They may be able to see things better from, up there from the option B, or option A or one. They might be able to see the playground better, view of it anyway versus head-on swivel. They really don't set it in a whole lot. If you see to the right side of the picture there, we've got two benches that we got through the grant, the recycling grant, and those teachers really liked those two benches, and so.
Yeah, we'll have to slide the benches over, but those are pretty easy to move.
I don't think anything stops you if you set it up on the spot.
Oh, right, yeah.
The canopy, it is not heavy.
So we can try it out and see what we like.
Because you're not, are you concrete anchoring it in?
On that canopy, they just drilled holes and they drilled probably a two-foot bolt through the concrete into the ground, so there's nothing, there's no anchor. Yeah, you just fill those, fill those up with concrete and move on.
Take your best shot.
I was surprised when they put it, I said, this thing's not gonna fly off, and he said, no, okay. And it hasn't, it's stayed right there. Actually, when they put it in, we moved it three or four times before we picked that spot after they put it together, so.
Does anybody got any more questions for Lamanda?
Anything else?
Thanks, Lamanda. I really appreciate this project view. You guys all in favor of moving that project forward? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, aye, yeah.
Yeah, because I think she'll have some savings. If she does it now, and waits with the increase of stuff going up, is this gonna cost some money? There's no cost to the district for it. Maybe some manpower costs.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
We call that a dad project. PTO dads, come up.
It's approval project.
So thank you guys, that's great.
Alright, elementary guidance counselor services.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Yeah. I had sent this out, this is, the PowerPoint is straight from the state of Missouri from the Dusty website, and it's about our counseling program as a whole, K-12. I'm gonna read through the, actually, I don't even know how to do this. Do I just?
Arrow to the right.
Okay. I'm not gonna really read through all of it, I'm sure you guys maybe took a look at it. Mainly, the thing to know is that a lot of people think of the counseling program as the counselor, but there's a whole program behind that person that we implement mainly for main areas. So curriculum, responsive services, and individual planning and system support are really like what the counselor does, K-12. So, I just, I really wasn't sure what you guys would want to see or look at, so I just printed out like an infographic that kind of gives a snapshot of specifically elementary. To date, we've had, and I, I said, okay, thank you. I said, to date, we've had 96 students referred for elementary counseling services, but that was two weeks ago, so now we have 101, and it'll just kind of keep going. Some of these copies are not as good as the others. So that's the responsive services part. So like I said, those four main components. So, the responsive services, I think a lot of people think, when they think of school counseling in the elementary level, they think of the counselor meeting with students. That's all that means, responsive services. Prices, crises, maybe some academic referrals, some behavioral referrals, some social, emotional type stuff. So I didn't hit a lot of detail. It's roughly about 40% of our elementary schoolers. So, I could get that information or data if that's needed or wanted at the end of the school year. I think it's important to look at it as we close out a school year or planning for the next year to see what types of referrals we're getting and where the high numbers are. Curriculum, I teach 13 classes each week, so all 238 students receive those lessons. Kind of just explain underneath that about the GLEs. You know, that can all be found on the Dusty website and the PowerPoint as well. So that's just the curriculum, the lessons, the lessons that I teach in the. Under individual planning and system support, the school counselor, I sure even remember from Carla Comey, you know, was on the PDS leadership team, the principal advisory committee. We're also the building test coordinator, the early childhood advisory team, teacher and staff consultation and collaboration. We have rural school-based mental health services in our school, so that requires a lot of referral and communication and coordination. I don't want to make this go down that road. Okay, sorry. The wings program is our gifted program, the counselor is in charge of that. And then our buddy pack program, I pretty well, you know, coordinate those services each week for the buddy packs for the students to get to, that go come to the school. So that's kind of just a snapshot of just elementary. I'm not really sure what kinds of questions you would have as far as the program as a whole or at the elementary level. Like I said, that's just such a tiny little snapshot of everything. It'd be impossible to tell you about everything, probably. But if there are any questions, you can email me or add.
This is awesome. It's just easy to.
Yeah, I always appreciate that when somebody's trying to explain their big picture. That's it in a nutshell, like I said, it can't quite encapsulate everything, but that's kind of the gist of it.
Board, any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all much.
You're welcome.
Alright, appreciate it. Ms. Kings included a report there.
Oh, good.
I'm gonna point out one piece on yours. Can I help you guys, my name is Steve. Can I ask you to correct that part, that's there for you to take a look at? I think it's always important when you say we build the future, what kind of future are they headed to? It's also on your screen there, but if you look at, that's not just 2021 graduate spread, it's nicer to go back three years. And we look at our end results, where are our students going? Because we're preparing them for some kind of a future, we're looking at it, you know, just take a look at those percentages from those class years, they all differ just a little bit. 2021, we saw a lot more kids entering the military. That's kind of a characteristic of a class sometimes. You get some kids that have more parents or close affiliations with the military in some way or get drawn by that, or maybe you just have a better recruiter that's coming in to help your kids better and pushing them to their life. We're seeing more kids are in employment, especially back in 2019. They're, so, you know, what, what future are we preparing them for? We're preparing them to enter the workforce. So, I think more and more with our economy. And you see some, I just saw a commercial this morning, it was, I can't remember the name of the company, but hey, come to our company, we'll teach you how to weld, we'll teach you how to, how to develop these skills and work in the paint shop, and we'll train you, we'll train you, and we're gonna start $15 an hour. Well, that's not something we've seen for a long time, the shortage of workers. So you're seeing more and more companies that are grabbing kids out of high school. We've got a few of our graduates that are already working jobs, and they're in college too. They're already working jobs, almost full-time. Sometimes Miss Madder's trying to snag them to the building because the opportunities are there. This goes, kind of goes back to when, you know, a lot of kids back in the 40s, 50s, and 60s had faculty jobs, had other jobs that you'd go right into out of high school, or maybe they didn't even go to high school. They just went into the workforce. So it's kind of an odd thing because what's been the message for many, many decades now? It's all about, you know, when you leave high school, are you going to?
College.
College, there you go. So now it's becoming more of, what are you gonna go train to do vocationally? We've got a lot of kids involved in our vocational program, you can kind of see that. You're gonna go into that two-year college or two-year program, where they're going into employment, and I always used to tell the kids this, I said, it doesn't matter if you go to college or don't go to vocational program. If you go to Mickey D's, you're gonna go to the school Mickey D's. You're gonna learn how to make shakes, fries up, fries down, you're gonna learn how to make a burger, how to keep, how to keep food from spoiling. You're gonna learn stuff no matter what. So, I think it's just good to kind of know the character of what we have. We have a pretty good split, especially in those top three. And the characteristic of every class is a little different. What's important to me is that we have built something at the high school and the elementary, preparing them for middle school and high school, that no matter what they want to do, if it's the future they're pursuing, if they're gonna go be a builder, if they're going to go be an electrician, whatever it is, they're a learner when they walk out. So we don't want, Miss Madder and I, we don't like you to say, I just barely graduated. No, 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 we wanna prepare you in some way because you are going to do something. Sitting on mom and dad's couch is not the option. It's not. I talked to a parent the other day, said, I still got one at home that's 22-years-old, didn't come through this school, but man, I need to get him out of the house. So, I think that's the collaboration we have with parents, and that guidance and counseling piece is so important that we open up these opportunities to kids so they're aware. And I also used to tell kids when I was a principal all the time, high school's like a, like a food bar. You're trying a little bit of everything to see where is your disposition, what do you want to go do? And I think we do a really good job, you can say we're a small school all day, but there are all kinds of contests and opportunities for kids in this small school. A lot more than a lot of other small schools. So, that's a really good thing, that we keep those opportunities up for kids. So that's all I got to say about that. And then there's the A-plus program. You guys are kind of aware of that, that's been around for a little while, Miss Wilson works that. She gave you a report there, just kind of gave you an idea. Those kids that are accessing the state-paid tuition, and we've done some good things along those lines as well, is making opportunities for kids to meet. Probably the hardest piece of that is that 50 hours of tutoring they have to get. Miss Madder's done a great job kind of encouraging kids to get into cadet teaching for credit. Mr. Kohler's done a great job making opportunities with the elementary teachers so that our kids can be able to access that. 100% of college-bound seniors are A-plus eligible. They can get into, we got 29 A-plus scholarships, looks like this past year based on her report. So a little bit of feng shui, getting them guided that way. We don't like, we don't like seniors in their last semester saying, hey, I don't have my 50 hours. It's like, that's not a good sign, so.
We've only had a few that, that have come to us in January, January and said, hey, I think I need my A-plus, and we figured out how to get it accomplished. So even those that have come to us late, we're making it happen for them still. They kind of came late to the ballgame.
Are they still able to help with summer school and get their A-plus hours?
They were, yes, they were. And then what we are doing now through that cadet teaching, we have that going on, but then also the academic intervention that we've been having all year long after school, they've been coming into that. So if they're not able to do cadet teaching, say they go to VOTET, they can't do the cadet teaching, they come in after school to the academic intervention programs and help tutor during that time and helping those kids at that same time in janitorium and fifth order.
I'd also expect, guys, the interim employment piece. You may think, well, that's all you're gonna do is graduate, enter employment. Think about all the skills you learned from your first job. Learn how to show up to a job, learn how to be on time, learn how to meet demands. It's a good thing, and sometimes it will focus you and say, you know, I don't want to do this particular job my whole life, I am going on to school. So you get that 22, 24-year-old that goes, I need to earn a certification or something, or a license, or maybe I need a two-year degree. I, I don't want to do this entry-level job my whole life. So sometimes kids get a little more mature. Do you have a question?
Yeah, if, China's and stuff, summer school, do we have an alternative plan for those kids?
I gotta go over that, let's give them a report. Any other questions?
I'm talking specifically about A-plus, though.
Oh, A-plus?
Yes, they'll, if students were playing. Yes, they'll, if students were planning on getting their A-plus on their hours through summer school.
They'll be able to get some hours, yeah, in that. It won't be a full-fledged summer school, but there still will be some opportunities. And with cadet teaching for credit, they can be assigned actually to one of our elementary teachers for a whole school year if they need to. So they can get into that program as well. And we have after-school tutoring. They can do that as well. We have a lot of spots to pick up those hours.
But specifically this summer, what can they do?
We will have, you guys wanna talk about that now? Let's jump right to my report.
Yeah, that's about the time.
I can do it out of word. Summer school and talking with, and they're gonna come on site again on Thursday. Our project manager, I mean, I think he's committed to do what we want to do. However, we're looking at all the graphics and the places that are shut down in the building. And the fact that it will impede them somewhat, so we will have a much better chance of starting school on time if we're out of their way. However, they'll still try to open us on time. Having been, I know California had a project, they started school, was it a couple of weeks late? And then I was actually a model of these in Mexico. We started four or five days late. That was a major overhaul. We're having a major project. This is GRP's largest project right now. Major. We're talking ductwork all out of the elementary. We're talking about thirty hard workers or more on-site daily. We're talking about possible electrical shutdowns, dust, noise, trucks. Almost every parking lot taken out, other than the one over by the football field. A lot of disruption for the entire building. And I had looked over all of that. And also, if we were tried to play usable classroom to make this happen, Mr. Kohler's people who would work summer school would be picking up all that they can carry and moving it physically to a high school classroom, which has to move all of their stuff out of the way, not to mention seating or whatever else they do. And then getting out of the way of those workers and then moving it all back, trying to get the school year started. There's a lot to consider there that I just don't think we can run a full-fledged summer school like we've done before. So what should we run? We will have the Ag Center that will be untouched. So we have fifth quarter, which is kids completing their courses. We also have some students with special needs that have an extended school year that will have to have some classroom space. We also have Bigger, Faster, Stronger, which has been a good program for our kids and keeps them involved. And Miss Madder has been in talks with four.
There's four different teachers.
There's four different teachers looking at field trip opportunities, off-site opportunities. And if we would have to have maybe one room, possibly we'd do one room at the high school but stay off to the left in the way from everybody. That could be a fax room or some other room. We'd say this one's most out of the way. So we'll still have some summer school. It will just be reduced from what we normally have. If that makes sense. I think there's an opportunity too. Our teachers really are good at the high school, thinking out of the box and kind of looking at where some, I think Ms. Womack was telling me she had four different things. They did all four cores of subject matter.
All four, there's four core teachers that have been working together and then one, so I guess five total and four, but four core teachers and one fine arts teacher that are working together. What they could offer in conjunction with each other that provides some enrichment for our children.
So there'll still be some level of service there. If that makes sense.
High school only though, no elementary?
That'd be, that'd be middle school and high school and that. Needs would include some elementary kids.
But otherwise, no elementary?
But full of elementary now. So that is the plan for now.
Could you add something?
Summer school? No.
All right. What did you have any, what else do you have?
Update on our projects. Phase one, security lighting, best more lighting going on right now. My electric was in today. They'll be putting those lights up there. Craig really wanted to write on the car, still working on a way to close up. The Duke Schneider to kind of go over the big project this summer. They expect, and they expect it to be on time, all of the HVAC equipment to be here at the end of May. So they'll start staging that stuff. Probably most of it will be in a circle drive and the parking lot right next to the Ag Center. So then the parking lot we'll have will be over the high stadium. The ESR money, you guys probably got that memo from me? Has been approved, assigned, and we have access to that. We submitted a budget to that and kind of following guidelines that MASA and MSBA has told us to make it a little easier to access that money. However, the one point four million dollars that will come in, about six hundred thousand of that will be flowing through our coffers and we'll be shifting that back over to take care of the overage that we have, which is first is our loan that we have out. That loan, that money will not come to us until the actual, the equipment is delivered. So that'll be at the end of May and we have to inspect that. And honestly, I think we have to actually look it up. So it's kind of like just waiting there for us to sign through the check. Of the ESR budget, about three hundred thousand dollars will be designated for learning loss. That's our interventionist, that's some additional aides and tutoring. So a lot of things going in there, possibly some other software that may fall outside our title budgets. Phase two. I told you already about summer school. That's all I have. That's it. And now we have the best presentation ever from Saber. What I've been asked for, well, I don't know how long.
Thanks, Saber. Restrooms are good.
I like restrooms.
We've been talking about, I went down to cold camp, looked at theirs a little bit. I liked it. Definitely liked the epoxy floor. I've messed with that a lot. Chemical resistance. This company here is out of Kansas City. They've done the KC Stadium. They did cold camps, they've done a bunch of the lake. And they can go do about anything you want. They haven't installed it. It's covered in grinding floors, not removing tile or anything. They're not worried about the tile being asbestos or anything. Cause then you're looking at sixty-five dollars a square foot for removal. Cause it's gotta be ifa and.
So we're not gonna have to deal with tile?
Nope, they'll grind it down and they'll float over it. So put a mortar, a full leveler over the top of it. Basically cement, make sure it's level. And also they will go up to five foot up the wall. So somebody peeing on the wall or something like that.
We're getting rid of them urinals?
Yes, we're going to add a three. Instead of six and shoulder-to-shoulder.
Yeah, cool.
This is the other company we talked to, Custom Coatings. They did their restrooms over here. I asked around a little bit, trying to keep some guys local. They will not go up the wall. And they would have to, we'd have to remove the tiles, floor tiles. Talked about doing a big single sink. This one is hard to see, but sort of slid across there's two drains. Students couldn't stuff down the drains. And of course, automatic faucets. And that's the one there we were looking at. And it was eleven thousand thirty-four dollars for the both of them. So it's like fifty-three hundred a piece.
What do you got, Kelly, over there in the elementary?
I got four basin sinks in each bathroom.
Yeah, oh, I got you.
He's, have you ever been to Sam's Club? It's kind of what they use.
Yeah. This is up to the future.
Yeah. ADA hype for the handicap and everything.
Automatic, put your hand in the thing to the water.
Yep. And then this is another company I contacted. They're a little bit higher. They're fifteen thousand four hundred, of course ADA compliant. They're prefab. And they're four to ten business days out. For the other one, it's a little bit cheaper, it's gonna take them like three weeks. But with the floor being done, you're looking at two weeks there anyway. They'll be grinding for a week and then epoxying for a week. New partitions, the solid plastic installed by this company's fifteen thousand five hundred fifty-five. Powdered coated steel, similar to Mr. Kohler's got his restrooms over there and in the junior high. We talked about, I talked to the company about stainless steel. They said, we don't want that. It looks good for about a day. And then everybody marks it up and then it's hard to catch up. And of course, I can, something I installed, solid plastics, eighty-nine hundred. And then the powder coated steel is sixty-four hundred. So let me install them. Plastic, like I do a little better as an MGA guy. Also, everybody, all the schools are going to that because of ten years, urine's gonna rust it. You're gonna have to worry about replacing the panel. That's four hundred dollars a panel, five hundred dollars a panel.
We've seen that with Kelly's already.
On the powder coated steel.
Yep. And I know the concern with the plastic, kids carving in it. I seen cold camp, I talked to their maintenance director and he said, you can take a heat gun and get rid of ninety percent of it. Just blowing over it and kind of getting soft again, smushing it. Cause they can tell a little bit, the color difference, but not a lot. Then getting supplies from Home Depot. This is automatic faucets we're looking at. Looking at some hand dryers. Automatic flushers, new toilets, and then putting changing tables in the restrooms as well. A lot of the little kiddos coming to the ballgames and stuff. Me, one of them. I got a two-year-old, so. It's always nice for them to have that. Kind of break down the big-ticket items on our pricing, sinks, the epoxy floor. Of course, that one's just ECS. The touchless toilets, that's the total price. Toilets themselves are nine hundred and eighty bucks for ten of them, so ninety bucks a piece. And your flushers, we're looking at, they were three thirty-nine a piece. And that's a whole new setup. Cause those ones are probably from, the restrooms put in. And then the urinals, they're eleven hundred dollars a piece. I didn't update that. And then the hand dryers, they're eight forty-nine a piece. Think about putting four, two in each bathroom.
Yeah, they get rid of a lot of our paper towel waste we hope that we're looking for. And those get hit us expensive.
And of course, partition prices. In the grand total, you're looking at fifty-two thousand forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents for them installing the partitions. And the installation of the floors, it's going through Home Depot over and stuff to them. They're kind of a little cheaper than Lowe's on some things. They kind of bounce back and forth. So you're looking at twenty-six thousand. Restroom, where I install, you're looking at forty-eight thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents on the partitions, cause obviously I can't do the flooring, but. And then today we found out Nurse Molly has a grant that all of our auto sensing flushers, faucets and all that stuff follow under her grant. Go up and down. That knocks off eleven thousand sixty-three dollars if we could get that under her grant.
And that's been submitted. We're just waiting for approval.
Save the special.
Do you remember when I ran the turn of the line up there and she told me about that grant? I said, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew it was a lot, but I'll be okay.
And then, of course, everybody's timeline. We'll start, if I can, y'all agree with everything, I can start ordering parts tomorrow. And then start at the end of school, May twenty-third, in the latest-ish mid-July bearing materials. Depending on something comes in late, like Home Depot, they've got everything at work now. They should turn it to the store or us. Any questions?
So that's even using that one company with the epoxy and everything, and then you doing everything. It should all be done by the July.
Yep. Up to, they will, they'll go up to five feet up the wall.
What colors? Do we, did you tell the colors?
They will make us a custom color. They'll do a gray base. And then they throw in like a flake and they can customize the flake to what we want it to be. Do you want it to be redder or whiter or black, whatever colors you want. Normally it's a tri-color. Or we can do a solid color.
Do we have to decide that tonight or?
No. The ECS guys, the sales, the rep out of the lake, he's rep, he'll come up anytime with a flake or think of a certain color or design or anything. The design set changes a little bit on the price, but the flake wouldn't change anything. And he can make us up some samples for us to look at too.
Okay.
And we'll send them.
Saber's done a lot of good work on this. Guys pulling it all together.
I did have one question, Dr. Robb. You know, talking about the air conditioning in those bathrooms. Is that gonna affect, how's that gonna affect your project, Saber, with? I mean, I don't.
The only thing it'd affect would be the flooring, the epoxy floor.
Cause I know you gotta have the right humidity, the right temperature and if they're, I mean, surely they'll, even if you have the old unit, you can still do that, but.
Right.
It sounds like, it seems like you're gonna have to run some ductwork maybe into the female bathroom. You might ask him that, Dr. Robb, just so, it doesn't hold you up.
Right.
Did Duke tell you that?
Well, he was, remember that day he was talking to us on the phone? And he said something about, there was a couple of ducts that they had to run in the high school but not like what they're running in the elementary. I thought he said they were gonna duck either from the bathroom to that foyer, your new foyer, door foyer. Something vice versa, because I think the men's bathroom's gonna be ducted into your office. I believe that's what he told us.
Remind me when we walk with him tomorrow, let's show him that and see what he says. Might be good to keep that on while it's going on. Questions?
I do have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I think you did a great job and I'm just curious though, like I saw with Home Depot, he said they were cheaper than Lowe's. Did you consider or call like plum supply or any more wholesale like places versus?
Yes, when you get over fifteen is when their prices start getting cheaper.
Okay, just curious.
Oh, you're good. I've played phone tag with a bunch of companies.
I figured you'd.
I even worked with Hilliard. They come to, Dr. Robb was talking to Ron today.
I was trying to work him over.
And they actually do partitions. I'm asking the partitions, and he's gonna give us a bid on that, our price, not a bid. Cause he already worked with them, so. And that's something I didn't think about, they need to do. I know equipment and everything else they do. I didn't think about that.
What else?
Were you tackling this by yourself, or you and Mike, or what?
Most of demolition I do myself. Cause I just pull in toilets and partitions, the biggest parts, the urinals.
And when you get in between them two bathrooms, that's gonna, that's gonna be the big part.
Yeah.
He's been back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you're getting, there's a whole lot of reworking going on there too.
Right. I figured in like a thousand dollars for misplaced materials for unexpected things like that, getting back there and busting by.
Where you're gonna run into it.
Yeah. They're not too bad. They're cast.
Yeah, good thing about the urinals he's putting in, it's gonna be new and solid tire, so you don't have to worry about the floor drain or, but he is, you are talking about putting a floor drain, right?
Yeah. One of the urinal drains will bring it up to where the new floor is.
So you can spray it out or whatever?
Cause there's, yeah, there's not one in there. Cause there's, yeah, there's not one that, we just push it off and then run.
Yeah.
Anything else? You guys okay within proceedings of that project? You wanna vote on it?
Yeah, and if somebody wanna move on the, up to what was, go back to your number. Up to that, probably that top number.
For second, second, and we still have five feet of the grant then.
Yeah.
I mean, what are we going with here?
Don't, whether, what, man, somebody moves on.
I was just, I mean, you're not talking about that much money, I'm not saying that Sabre couldn't do it, I'm just thinking of time, you're gonna have, uh, Butzer in there. I mean, that place is gonna be a disaster.
The whole school's gonna look pretty rough.
The reason I ask is we don't wanna squeeze our custodial staff and choke them out if they're getting, if Butzer pulls out three days before school starts. And the whole place is a wreck still, so it needs cleaned and disinfected and all that stuff.
I did talk to.
So what can you do this summer?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I made these guts so we can get on.
It might be all he can do, if he's choked out without entry and stuff.
We're talking about wax, rewaxing the junior high and the cafeteria, because they said the junior high is basically just a full set, HBA Steve, when I talked to Butzer last time.
And help, I'm assuming Butzer's cleaning up after himself, you guys aren't.
I talked to him a little bit.
Sweet, really clean is all we have.
Yeah, just like anybody else, just.
Yeah, I would get that.
Good, let's go.
Well, generally they should have.
Not bricklay.
But I mean, generally, I mean, like in your contract, uh, it's you're responsible for cleaning up.
But we seem clean up, right.
Well, what, we're having Duke come in, Duke Schneider, uh, come in tomorrow, and we're gonna talk to him about, cause we're concerned about the time to get it cleaned up. He's gonna set up a schedule and start informing Sabre every time a section of the building, you're done in this section, you can clean this section, you can wax these all, we don't have to do them in the salt anymore. So that we can get segment by segment, as it opens up, we can get to them, uh, as opposed to, and we're out of it until the very last minute, you know, that, that's gonna stink really, really good on that. I, I was at a big project they did in Mexico, a high school, four stories worth of building, they had over a hundred workers in there, and the teachers came there for four days, and that's all we did is, and principals and everybody, we just cleaned the whole place with all the and cleaned the rest of the stuff. The, the library had a mountain of desks and books in the middle of the library to the students. I couldn't believe it, I never seen it in my, it's like a bombed out building in Iraq, but I don't think ours looked that bad. Cause they have to go through brick walls and put it into the first tile.
Just keep in mind though, when you run into a little problem here or there, your schedule's delayed. And I promise you, when they tell you we're gonna be done with this hallway, I promise you, they're gonna be back in that hallway.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Like money boots. Okay, and that's, kind of brings up some other things we might talk about with modeling and stuff, just to kind of keep our custodians focused on the building, so we don't have enough time to talk about that here, and all that.
One quick question, the partitions, plastic?
Yeah, they're inkstick, plastic.
What about the leg?
They'll be plastic besides the anchors, right, on the whole.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, uh, also I ask is, you know, we pull Sabre and his group into doing the work, uh, does that cost us money somewhere else? Cause we're having to hire out, you know, what they could be doing otherwise. Trying to figure out if this is a, a strict five house or if it's offset by.
I don't know. I don't know, man, it's gonna be, I think, once we get thirty, forty workers in there, we're gonna just kind of like improvisation city, trying to keep on top of it, so I don't know.
The biggest thing with it.
Yeah. It's gonna be a.
Right.
Oh, can't do that, go over here.
Yeah. And me and the Butzer guys, they've called me, like, they've got the ladder up to the top of the gym already. And he's been very adamant about communicating with me, and I'm hoping that stays that way.
Yeah.
And the guy that's gonna run, the Butzer guys, he's been there several times, he was over Christmas break, uh, he, he's got my personal cell phone number, he texts me, and he's like, hey, I'll be here this day. And communication's gonna be the biggest thing with that guy.
Yeah.
Somebody wanna move on this downwards, at least give us.
I mean, you.
Like with the top, I don't think, I mean.
I would, I would be the biggest one now.
Yeah.
And then if they have time and they can help and say it was money, they do, I don't know if we can oversee.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I make a motion now, for the bathroom off the foyer, the condition, so Sabre's stuff. He's shorted his materials given here today, he gave us may after school.
Twenty-third.
Matt, they moved on that, did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-three thousand forty-seven dollars eighty-five cents.
So let me, let me just make sure I understand, is our, are what we're saying, say, are, are we saying that we do not want to do the work?
The only thing I wouldn't be doing is the floor and the partitions.
At the fifty-three or at the forty-eight?
At the fifty-three, with the ECS would be coming in, the forty-eight ECS would be coming in, doing the floors anyway, I'd just be installing the partitions.
I agree, and they put all the partitions in the floors.
So will you use the higher number here, or do you have that, that we'll do that, and it's a.
Yeah, we'll figure some things back, so, we'll find that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I can say.
Sabre, did you, did you guys vote on that yet?
Well, Matt, he moved on it.
Someone needs to second.
I'll second it.
Second, my Stephanie, all in favor?
Motion carries. One last thing, Sabre, let's talk about the, uh, we have an RFP out for the gym floor, we're talking about that a little bit, we were walking.
Mr. Cole Pepper, you can chime in whenever too, uh, the floor we have now in the high school is seven years old.
This is, this summer will be summer sevens.
Summer sevens. From being originally put in, and they recommend after five years to give it to settle and resane and paint it in, and then you're good for fifteen years. And we've talked to Luberts, they've come and looked at it, they're, they're the ones that installed it also. We'd be changing the black outline to a dark stain, and a darker stain on inside a three-point line.
We get our cardinal evidence there instead of.
In our cardinal evidence, and two ladders for when they practice, so that's the electrical tape.
The footwork ladders that I have taken out, electrical tape.
Hey, money man, how, has this worked into the budget?
Not that budget, but I have already worked on the other budget.
The big budget, that's what I'm talking about.
The big budget.
Or, where's the budget?
Not yet.
Okay.
You just like that. This is actually the next year, perfect.
Oh, sure. Yeah, alright.
So what's the cost of reconditioning that gym floor, repainting it and all that?
Luberts bid was twenty-nine. But, you know, we're accepting sealed bids on that.
Oh.
It's out, it's in the paper, it's on the website, initially, since you are.
I didn't read the paper, that's okay.
We're not supposed to talk about the bids yet.
Right, I just was curious, I didn't know that was out for bid.
I'll have Hannah edit that out.
Yeah, please. We gotta give them a fair chance at it, so.
And then that'd be rewaxing, maybe, we'll see what it costs to sand and repaint that as well, cause I don't know, last time in elementary we did that.
Two thousand and three.
Okay, so it's original.
So the RFP that I put out these for both gym floors.
So it'd be sanding, waxing, staining, all the good stuff for both gyms?
Yep.
You go to do that once, right?
Oh, elementary too.
Uh, three times.
He can tell us three when they put their four down, they could sand and paint three times.
They said if you want, yeah, that's the recommended.
Is this elementary too?
No, 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 well, we're talking about the new gym in the high school.
Yeah, right. Like you.
You would get thirty more years out of your.
Oh, absolutely.
Fifteen years to do it again, which reality is fifteen equals seventeen or eighteen.
Ours has just a little bit of board replacement, right, needs to be done, not much, very minor, some fixes.
Okay, well, let's get the sealed bids and, uh.
That'd be next board meeting, just when you guys are at, you wanna walk around.
You can't stop a vendor from telling you what a price is, though.
None of them.
Alright. Moving on.
I guess. You guys vote, so you do it?
We did, yes.
Uh, we, we got a motion and a, there's a second, and all in favor, we got a second. Go get them.
Go get them, Sabre.
Alright, we're moving on, building admin reports, uh, what questions, does anyone have for admin? Not getting you guys off the hook, but we got a lot to do here.
I have a question.
Yes.
Actually, Jason, um, I mean, how are you, how are you gonna work around the gym situation this summer?
Uh, well, uh, two thousand and fifteen, whenever we had that bond issued pass, I was able to work with people at St. Andrews to get us some days.
Okay, that was what I was gonna ask, did those go?
It's kind of different for each sport, luckily we only have, you know, that need the gym, you only need basketball and volleyball, that, you know, use the gym a lot.
For me, if I can have two practices, I'll be okay, most of ours have to shoot out to other places. But yeah, that's, the timeline wise, that's why we told them, uh, the gym floor people, we told them they had to be out by twentieth, I think, of July, so it could be a full two, two and a half plus weeks, so they would be ready to go for the first day volleyball practice, uh, on August eighth.
Gym floor, if they were to do it, um, as far as practices in the summer, once school year ends, and you work on St. Andrews to get, you know, a realistic amount of days, options, that we can go. We're not gonna be able to hold full week team camps like we normally do, but we didn't do that in two thousand and fifteen either, I mean, you can't take up St. Andrews gym for the entire June. Um, they're, I don't think they're gonna let us do that anyway, um, we'll see, but I would think realistically, you know, if you can get four or five practices in there with each team, you only get twenty contact days, so if you spend five of your twenty days in a gym, I think you're not right.
What else? Anybody?
I kinda wanna ask Jason a question too. Are the numbers for spring sports still pretty accurate that were in the report, or have they changed?
Uh, fourteen, uh, so baseball's fourteen, but one kid can't play this year, so I voted thirteen. Softball, um, twelve kids, track, fourteen kids, uh, golf is still nine kids with one kid that showed up occasionally, but they might have to if that kid shows up, but I don't think so, I think it's nine, um, and then junior high track is pretty large, you got a big eighth grade.
I think they lost one today for golf. And there's one that's possibly thinking about it. That's what I was informed with that for practice.
And some of the numbers of the high school kids, and, you know, it's skewed, if you look at the eighth grade, eighth grade classes, you got a lot of kids that participate, so the junior high is a huge number. Our senior class had three football players, one girl, one more basketball player. Uh, no baseball players, your senior class, they have a lot of kids that participate, uh, and the junior class, baseball has one. So, you know, your upperclassmen aren't huge participators in sports right now, um, maybe it's, it's a couple, who knows, but, um, you know, that messes with the numbers a little bit, if you're on any other classroom, or well, numbers above the classroom.
Do we not have, well, yeah, we don't really have a JV baseball team either.
Well, with the kid that broke his thumb, and it took out, I took out one or two JV pitchers, so right now for the first two weeks, it's not looking like you're gonna pin on weather, stuff like that, you know, with limited number of innings you get for an entire season.
The kid.
Well, I grew up in the JV, until we got in there together. But I think once we chart it out, I think we can get three innings JV baseball, you know.
Yeah.
Past the games was just about all our conference has anyways, about half the teams have three innings.
Yep. What else, guys, gals?
I don't have anything.
New business.
We had some fun facts, if y'all pay attention to them.
I read them.
Well, I was trying to carry on Kelly's tradition of fun facts.
She's trying to scrum them.
No, a trump.
I'm handing it over.
Passing it off.
Passing it along.
I bet she doesn't know how many days till my birthday either, though. And I couldn't either, cause I don't know.
I bet you got a calendar.
No, I don't.
Mark it off, yeah.
Okay.
I just had, can I share something?
Yes.
I have my title and sped here, but we had a excellent Mr. Stinky Feet night.
I did see.
Informational night, and those gals put that together, it's the most fun we've had in a long time, so we appreciate that, hopefully they'll carry that on. Um, very entertaining, um, I seen him do the adult version, it's clean adult, but like at the principal's thing at the lake, uh, a few years back, and he made it, all the principals and people get up and do the things he made kids do. So that was a very good informational night, good feedback, and we are gonna do a kindergarten information night, not necessarily a screening, uh, just because of the building project, um, we do a meet and greet in the fall. But when they can't tell us if we can be in August first or August fifteenth, uh, we, uh, had Christopher ahead and put up, put a night together, and so they're gonna do just an informational night. Parents with kiddos coming to kindergarten, just to come in and still kind of do a meet and greet, no testing, um, our testings are gonna be different next year, uh, due to DESI, maybe, so. That's just two things I wanted to touch on, but I got it on my board report, but I didn't know if you. Not, not necessarily, but anyway, thank you for all that, and care about.
Alright, moving on, new business, grass mowing.
You guys have a preference on, you want to put that out for bid again, or do you want the SW crew to handle it?
Do we have to do it anyway, I think the guys that did it last year did a good job, didn't they?
Supposed to do it anyway.
Oh.
Can I comment on the gentleman that did last year?
Yeah.
Uh, they only did it on weekends, that was the only downfall.
Yeah.
If it rained, they, they grass suffered everywhere.
Oh.
Well, I would know it.
Yeah, that's true. Well, what, I mean, this is a discussion, do we want to have Sabre's team mow it or bid it out?
We can defend the capacity.
I mean, I would say bid it, but that's, I'm looking at the big picture.
This summer. Yeah, lot going on this summer.
I understand that, uh, what is our regulation on age getting on mower? Cause I am gonna have a couple high school kids, Ms. Fisher's son, braved me, he's really interested in doing it, he'll be sixteen in May, and he mows a lot of yards.
Yeah.
I mean. So you have to check.
Well, if we're bidding it out, it's gonna be a company.
Right, no, yeah, I mean, if you decided.
To do it in.
You can announce, yeah, just hire, summer, a couple of high schoolers. Yeah, y'all did it a few years ago.
We have kids doing a lot more dangerous stuff than.
Grass.
Yeah, they're running saws and welding and, I mean, my kids.
I just didn't know, I made sure.
No worries. And running, no worries, yeah, I don't, I don't care if we wanna do it that way too. I mean, if Cole Pepper were, if you were mowing the football field anyway.
Right.
Yeah, and Sabre's gonna take.
I mean, now what are you gonna do all summer?
Sabre's taking on the football field.
It's okay, if we wanna handle it, we'll handle it.
I mean, you think, if you're gonna bring in two high school kids or whatever to help you, will you be, will they be able to keep up with that and whatever else you need for them to do?
Right, like I got Mikey, uh, love Mikey to death, he loves the mow.
And he's done that for forever.
Right, and if I've got Mikey and, say, Braden Fisher out there, I think we can handle it. Then I'll still have me, and I'm not working on the restrooms, uh, Tina, Cody. Whenever we get a second, ninth person hired, get back to full staff. To keep up with the building and whatnot.
I'd almost rather do that, and then if we get in a pickle, then you can call in, Aaron and Zach, can you help us out a few weeks? You know?
Well, whenever school starts up, though, well, like, I mean, we aren't, the grass will start to be mowed, you're like, October.
We won't have projects going on, then, we'll go back to normal. I mean, Mikey can handle it better.
I mean, what, what do you wanna do, Saber, if you're the director?
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable thinking we can mow. I, I understand Craig's, I've been in a lot of projects, nothing goes the way he wanted to.
Christ sakes, I couldn't even do phase one in a time.
Oh, I know.
You think we're gonna tackle this?
Bus is pretty confident, the guys I've talked to, they...
I mean, you're gonna have to hold your ass up, fire.
Yeah.
And that's why I said, let's cut back summer school, so just give them everything.
And that's why I'm thinking it's be best to bid it. He's already tackled the bathroom. He's in the bathroom, in between there. Mike's mowing, Braden Fisher's mowing, somebody throws a rock, or somebody's windshield going down fifty highway, well, now he's gotta climb out of what he's doing. I don't know, just, we're gonna have a lot going on.
Right.
But I'm one of seven, so it doesn't...
Well, you can mow on it.
Is this something that, say, we do let Saber and the group do it, and we come to, or he comes to the conclusion that it's way too much, because...
Yeah.
Everything's coming wrong, can we come back together, or him come and say, I need help, I can't do it?
We can bid it at any time.
Yeah, I mean, if he, if he thinks he can do it, I can, I can just let him do it. And then just, you know, feel com- hopefully feel comfortable and come to us if...
Right.
Can't, you know, start, this stuff starts looking like it's just...
Right.
Peaceful.
Yeah.
And we can make, we can make a decision at that point.
That's why we hired you, do the thinking.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I think Jason's anyone that can do something, so. I've gotta nurse that, mowed a lot of it last year, and I...
Do something to do it.
Somebody wanna move to lay on the table, on that? Or, does it move on? Does it move on?
Life do what he wants to do.
I'm with you.
No, it's called Kelly.
Well, I mean, if you wait till... You wait till he's in the mowing season, you may not get him.
I just want the football.
Those might be sky highs, too.
We got the...
Yes, it is.
I can give a thing, more than I do. It's been a little gone, but I do it. Especially, I'm one of those, one of those...
I know two guys in this room, they're sun and up.
I didn't say you.
I won't be...
I don't do that.
Revision of policy, GCPV, resignation professional staff.
That's just an update, I talked to MSBA, um, we do need to pass it or not pass it, or deal with this we have right now, um, going into contract season. There's some of the things that say that we've had, um, I don't know, several people highly qualified, went through the interview process, had them locked in, and then all of a sudden, they went to Bootville, or they went somewhere else, they continue. They held our job as a backup, and then bought us to get out of contracts, which is not good for our kids, it's not good for our service, they made a commitment, they signed a contract. One of them, I remember, um, actually, our policy had a little loophole in there, where they didn't pay any kind of liquidated damages at all, and then she scrambled in the middle of June and tried to find some of your double spot. That's not good, but it is also how we end up with, um, um, candidates that maybe have not done so well over the districts, so we are the highest quality candidates. Uh, we gotta spend a lot more time looking at backgrounds, it's, it's time, 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 even though Nancy had to come in, um, some extra weeks, and just trying to fill spots. I think if people sign the contract, they should be living up to their commitments. So we see some changes there on the liquidated damages part, um, and, um, also, just short of that language, I was...
What do you do when they don't pay?
When they don't pay, um, you actually go, um, and you turn them into the Missouri School Board, um, and they are now, um, sanctioning those people who break contracts for up to a year, they lose their license to do things.
Yeah.
So, they are starting to be, uh, to a part of the system, so, um...
Well, I wanna say thank you for this, this is wonderful, gives us all the background.
Yep.
And we can play tough.
Yeah, I mean, we need, we need good teachers for our kids, and everybody's going after them. I think one thing that works for us and against us is we are very quick to get jobs posted, we're very, we adopted Talent Ed a long time ago, so it put us in the screen, people being able to apply quickly and be interviewed. Miss Metter, Mr. Kohler, Jason, Nancy have been really great using that program to our advantage, so we're getting our hiring decisions made very quickly. And we're seeing the top end, the people who are coming out, who are looking at us and say, well, this is a nice small school, I, I think they'd wanna come here, and then we're talking to them about a contract, talking to them about pay, the four bigger school districts have even moved. You know, all these people, they're, they're very ponderous and slow, haven't been in the largest in the state, I can say that. It takes a while to work through all their little layers of bureaucracy, and they're hiring late May, July, we don't wanna be in that, so... But we also don't wanna have people under contract, and then continuing to look for a job when they committed to us, so... There's some pretty stiff things that they'll have to consider if they wanna try to do that.
Is this something that we, they sign?
Mm-hmm. It's in the contract.
Yeah.
Thing of the world.
We get a very narrow window to pick up the best candidates for our school district, that's what makes it difficult. So small rules, I, you know, you start to get outside of it, you're, you're out of the museum as much anymore.
I'll move to approve the revision of policy, GCPV.
Motion by Bo.
Okay.
Second by Aaron, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, alright, moving on.
I make a motion, move into closed session for compliance with six one zero point two one, to discuss bullet points one, three, thirteen. To include the Board of Education, Mr. Kohler, Terry, and the administrators. Mr. Kohler, Leanna, Cole Pepper.
Good times.
I'll second.
Second by Bo. Craig.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
Stephanie.
Yes.
And we have to go to me. Thank you, guys.
You saw the end come in, your food is over there, enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, guys.
We'll take a short recess and get back into this.
Make sure to look at your name on it.